All right, I have six o'clock on my phone, so we're going to start the meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we start. The meeting is being recorded. If anybody else is recording it, please let us know so we can enter it into the record. And we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is to the back of the room. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, first up, we have the vote approved minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, open session. Does everybody have a chance to read them? And so are there any corrections? No? Okay, uh, see no corrections on that. I want to entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
And Joe, because we have Dan on Zoom.
Uh, no, you can just ask.
Okay, uh, Dan, I'm gonna ask you separately, uh, yes or no?
Sounds good.
And everybody else?
Yes.
Hi.
All right.
Oh, it's same, because I wasn't here.
What was everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, next up, we have the warrants.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents. School payroll warrants, April seventh, twenty twenty-two, one million, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. I wish to enter them in the public record.
All right. And next up, everything on the agenda is the student representative update, Leah and Zoe.
Hi, everyone. Um, so this week, we just kind of wanted to keep it super like light and airy, I guess, because all the kids are just super excited to be back. Um, uh, so we asked, um, if you were the principal, what would you change? Um, what would you like? What, what have you liked most about this school year? And what do you like most about your school? And so each of their respective schools responded, and, um, we got some pretty crazy responses from some of the elementary school kids. Like, um, the kindergarteners from the LG, they said that every Friday would be stuffed animal day. Every Tuesday, students would get ice cream with lunch, and students should get extra time to play on the playground on Tuesdays. Um, they would also change the rules, which means that they, uh, the rules of no running, no skipping, and using indoor voices would be gone. And ki- kids should be able to sit anywhere they want to at lunch with their friends. And build a new playground and have a dog day. So some of those could maybe be some reasonable. Um, and then this one's pretty good because it's more, uh, uh, like school related, I guess. Um, they want to introduce a new science special so that the students get more science. Add more math time, add fifteen minutes of recess time, add more writing time, and each lunch outside daily. So those are some pretty good responses from those. Um, well, definitely liked some of them, but Malia has, um, the yell for responses, which are definitely a little similar.
We've done pretty well. We love pets here. Um, if you were to think, what would you change? Bring a pet day, have more pets, have an art contest, more time for electronics, more time for Fortnite, no homework ever. Paintings around the building need to change, and, uh, Mr. Gigan said, and this is something their PTO is doing. Update the playground or recess, change the lunches, no test, a trampoline on the playground, after-school clubs. And have some special event happen each week on Fridays. Uh, what have they liked most about the school year? The Booster-Thon Fun Run, sitting with friends at lunch, teachers, everything, no masks, books they read, their teachers, decimals. MCAS days, half-days, ST math. Um, the friends I have gotten to know in my class, the PTO events, fractions, and Mr. G and Mr. B, they are very nice. Um, what do you like most about your school? Recess, teachers, teachers are all very nice, everything, especially the teachers, swings, the school is big, but it's not too big. The PTO, the way teachers teach us, everyone is so kind, and the slide. So lots of similar stuff.
Um, yeah. Yep, sorry. Um, for the high school, it's a little bit different, um, a little bit older, I guess. Um, so if they were the principal, what they, would they change? They want, uh, more field trips, more senior privileges, or making it an early release privilege, um, almost the end of the school year, so I don't know why they're pushing that. Um, but more LOB time, or add in free periods for students throughout the day for more homework time. Um, longer passing time, more free food, not just one lunch, no more social emotional learning. And, um, for what have you liked most about the school year? Generally, it has been a really good year, so that was the overall consensus, and then they liked the senior privileges, a return to the traditional events like prom and semi. The sandwich bar at lunch, and then a ninth grade student said that they liked the freedom and the chance to take electives. Um, for what do you like most about the school? They really like the school spirit, because, yeah, definitely, school spirit has come up a lot this year. Um, and then eating outside is an option for everyone. There's free food, and overall, they like the school, so. Yeah.
We love him.
Um, yeah, so definitely very happy, and everyone's just excited, I guess. But, um, yeah, that's all for us, so if you guys have any questions or anything.
Awesome. Um, I actually, I will say, as a school committee, we will approve all the changes unless Dr. Byetta overrules us. It don't happen, you know that he overruled us, but we wanted it to happen, and that's just where we're, I always say, I'm in favor of fun. Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, next up, we have the presentation and vote on the Norton Girl Scout Silver Award Project.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite our four students to come up. We'll ask them to introduce themselves. I'm very excited about this, as you know. Any type of a project that requires a physical plant change or ground required by law, school committee vote. And I hope you will support this wonderful program that they are putting together. Ladies, go ahead, introduce yourselves, let's go.
My name's Ryan Hilton.
My name's Kathy Phillips.
I'm Nicola Alabato. Uh, this is our silver award proposal. Uh, we all attended.
Girls, just tell me next.
Okay, we all attended Norton Public School Systems when we were little, and me and Cassidy, we attended the LGN. And over the years, the garden did not, has not been looking too well. I've seen it go downhill, and we decided, we went to go look at it, and we decided that I think we should take a shot at trying to fix it and make it a nice garden and not full of weeds for the kids to actually enjoy during recess. So a silver award is, um, something a cadet can do as a girl scout, and it's a project that helps the community educate citizens. It takes at least fifty hours of community service for per, um, girl scout, and the award is something that we're ready to start working towards. Um, our plans and goals through this project is that we plan to get permission from both you, the school, the school committee, and, um, anything else we need to do. And to start our silver award project. Um, as of right now, the garden is a little bit of a mess, and we plan to clean up the area, pull out the weeds, and make it look as good as possible. Um, probably want to do this project. Glasses. Um, so for fundraisers, we want to do Hilliard chocolate bars, because they're cheap, and we know lots of people will want to buy them. Uh, we want sponsors to, um, try and get them to donate some materials that we might need, because we know landscape companies would probably donate like dirt and mulch. Um, online donations, we know GoFundMe is a really good platform to use for getting money to do things. And then in-person donations, we were also thinking that we take plants as donations, so it's not as much we have to buy, we can just have them on hand right away. Um, I think that's all we have for funding. So our timeline is, with your approval, we would like to begin fundraising for it. Um, we'll begin to find sponsors for the project and start to get rid of plants. Uh, third option in our timeline is we'll start to fix up the garden by planting new flowers and replacing the dirt and rocks. We will pass our packets, we'll pass packets out with information about plants and the effective of our goal. We will also finish up the garden and finish any last-minute tasks. We'll finish the project in the garden. That will look good, and the deadline is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So, of course, our project will take more than just six steps, but those are just like the basic six steps. And how this will educate our community, well, this will help the students by giving out, um, packets on them about the different plants that we use, giving them more information about what went into it, and, um, it'll help them, inform them about how to take care of different plants. Uh, perennials, perennials are flowers and plants that grow every year, so like, uh, bulbs, they bloom every year, and you don't need a lot of maintenance on them. And that's kind of what we're gonna use mostly for the garden, because it's, it'll last a long time. Uh, that's a crocus, and I'm not sure how to pronounce that one. We also, and Baptisa, and. Thank you. If you have any questions, you can email us, um, and we will probably get back to you as soon as possible.
Good job.
So I have questions to ask you now, or I have to email you? So my, my first question is, um, I, I didn't get to the LG this year, because I was sick, but I, I don't know what the garden looks like. How big is?
Um, pretty big. Yeah, there's a bunch of different plots. Um, one of them is just all like dead grass, it's like really tall.
Tall grass.
Yeah.
Oh, and you?
Yeah.
That's gonna be a lot of work.
Yeah.
Talk to the director.
So, it was a, um, originally a garden that was put in there, and then whoever had it at that time, everybody's trying to work on it, and it comes to a time period where nobody's really in charge.
Right, and, and you think it'll take, uh, full fifty hours?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If it doesn't, I have a lawn. Quite honestly, um, I'm the, uh, I'm the fundraiser, so how, how much do you guys need to raise?
Um, we're not sure. We're not sure how we can get how many, how much, um, plants we can get for donations, so it kind of solely depends on how much material we're needing, and you think.
Okay. Would you be interested in plants that people have? Like, in my yard, I have a bunch of plants that are so overgrown that you divide them?
Yeah.
You can often divide them, so you'd be looking for that, too?
What we were looking for for donations, instead of using just regular seeds that you plant in the ground, since it takes a long time for them to actually show up.
Yeah.
We would take, um, split plants like you just said.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
I, I think it's so interesting that these young ladies, I met with them, uh, they were wonderful, they are wonderful, but it, you know, they, when they gave you their email, they gave you their private email, they didn't give you their school email, they're kind of separating themselves from, this is something that they're doing outside of school for school, not necessarily. So whoever taught you that, if it was you or someone else around you, that's, that's impressive, not that you needed to do that, because I'm fully supportive of you using your school email. And I was gonna suggest also to use our communications office, since this is a, uh, an event that is supporting the school, we're able to, like, email all of the families in town and just tell them about what you're doing when the time is right, that you guys want to do that.
There's also a Norton Gardens Club. Somebody who's listening online just texted that there's also a Norton Gardens Club, so maybe you can reach out to them for donations as well.
What are you gonna sell, chocolate bars?
Uh, just to get money, because.
I don't know how much.
He wants a case.
Five dollars?
Not five dollars.
Not five dollars.
Double, double, triple, whatever you're getting.
Tell you what, I'll buy fifty. Go for those guys, just tell them, I'll buy fifty.
Yeah.
This is also being reported.
Yeah.
See the name, take a picture, Sabas.
As, as a full cadet, I will also, I will spike one of you, and I will donate at least two flats of plants. So are these the ones that you're looking for mostly?
Those are just examples.
Okay.
But we would prefer perennials, actually, we want perennials.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want to go back again. Yeah, no, I understand that.
One of the issues with this project is the LG's, like, water isn't very, like, accessible to the garden, but, um, with perennials, we don't need as much water to be able to, like, help the plants grow. Because they just bloom every year, and they're very low maintenance.
Actually, you have some research to do to figure out which plants can tolerate that, right?
Well, this, with, um, with the renovation of the LG playground, this, this won't affect where the garden goes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not familiar with where the garden is, so I wanted to make sure.
It's, yeah. It's in between the first grade hallway and the second grade hallway.
Okay.
That's nice, too, because everybody can see it through the windows.
Yeah.
So, um, I am recommending the approval of the Girl Scout Silver Award Guardian Project that the LG OSS presented to receive the credits.
Uh, anybody have any other questions? No, okay, uh, seeing no other questions, comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the Norton Girl Scout Silver Award Project.
So moved, second.
All those in favor? I?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dan?
Um, as a former Girl Scout dad of this troop, a hundred percent yes.
Uh, five, congratulations.
Congratulations. Enjoy, and good day to family. Helping them out with it, appreciate it very much. Thanks, ladies.
Make sure you read notes. Yeah, make sure you read notes, love the chocolate.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have a first review and review of non-discrimination and harassment.
Yeah, these are a number of updates coming to us through MASC after being treated for a number of different, uh, issues that are happening statewide. So you'll see, um, the Attorney General of Civil Rights Division, uh, officially undertook their review of policy AC, non-discrimination policy, harassment and retaliation. The vice policies, uh, brought in the word discrimination, harassment, retaliation, as become a major issue, retaliation issue. Um, this also expands the description, uh, which takes into account that discrimination can be encompassing range of behaviors and forms, whether targeted or intentional. Um, and then policies AC, A, B, sexual harassment, and A, I, C, K, harassment of students have been similarly revised. Um, so you have four different, uh, pieces of information, uh, I should say, one, two, three, four, five, six, different pieces of information, information, current, updated, and new. Those are the three areas, um, and it is a first reading, um, that's available to you. I'm sure you've already gone through them. I just want to briefly just mention a couple. Um, AC was pretty significantly policy AC, which is the non-discrimination policy, harassment and retaliation. That is, that's the big one that came out of the AG's office, that's been heavily overhauled. Um, and then ACR was added within put from the AG's office, and again, they're utilizing, uh, the AG's office to get to this, um, information to you, and it is grounded on laws or updates to laws. There's gonna be further updates, because the state budget is about to be passed any day now, and then all of the bills that are language filled, there are over thirty bills around these types of topics that I think we're gonna be seeing.
Um, that would need to be incorporated into this?
Yes, that may actually require that after you do this first reading, and a second reading, you take a vote that in the fall, we're coming back to further changes. There's been some real, uh, language changes that are taking place. That's it.
And this goes in that big book that we went to?
So this will go, this goes back, these are your policies, uh, under those state or federal laws, uh, and or special to, to Norton. Um, as you know, we went through that two and a half-year process once before, so, uh, because we are, did part of that. If you remember, the contract, if you will, was that any changes to our, to policies, you automatically just get the recommendation sent. We don't have to pay for it. We don't have, we just have to take the time to go through it, make the changes, and then upload it into the, uh, send it to them to be uploaded to your school committee handbook, which is online in the school committee.
So, a couple of thoughts on this. And, and, uh, fair disclosure, I, I reached out to Joe when I originally read this, and we were talking about some of the stuff in here, and, um, the policy AC, in the middle of that page, the six bullet points, uh, I, I think, Joe, you had said that we actually struck that.
You don't, you previously obstructed this from another, uh, policy, and I, I apologize, I didn't actually look at it, but I was going to, but you already, uh, took a strike to some of this language from a prior policy, because you just, and I don't want to speak for the chairman and the committee, but I believe that the issue was it's very broad-stroke language that applied to specific federal or state law.
Yeah.
I, ID bullet number one says, support the state federal law, what state?
Right. Yeah, I, and that, and that was kind of my, my issue with it, I think, was, you know, a, a policy should be a, a set of, for, I guess, lack of a better term, rules and regulations, and these are, these are more broad.
Yeah.
Kind of ways, you know, place to live your life type of thing.
Yep.
Um, and, and I don't love that, I don't love that it is specifically beholden to the school committee to commit to something, I'm not a huge fan of that, so, um, I would like to strike those, those six.
Yep.
That's the, my first thought. Um, my second thought was on AC dash R, and I noticed that someone in the notes had, had said, um, same name as policy AC. Um, so I don't know if we, if we're thinking we're gonna change that, but, um, my, my issue with this, and not an issue, but my thoughts on this word, is it really adding anything to AC, or is it just, is it just to simply define it?
Thanks, just fine, but I'll ask, yeah.
All right. Then, I guess, why are we not defining AC?
We, we can. I think the question is that they, it becomes pretty long when they've done, but I can ask, I can ask for further advice on that, or if you'd like.
It's going in a book, and there's gonna be pages, right? It's, it's two pages under AC and two under A, PCR.
So, so the.
It's, it's on, like, again, it's not an issue, it's my first.
Right, the, the title, the titles are the same, so the argument for AC, ACR could be the definitions and clearly put them into the original, uh, AC, that's easy to do.
And then, um, and I apologize, because it was a little bit ago when I did this, but, um, on my notes, I have for, for file J I C K, I have on here, looks like our A, A, C, A, B policy. So, is, is the idea that we're going to replace A, C, A, B with J I C K?
Sorry, I don't have the ability to teach them. Um, so J I C K is specific to student harassment, does not mention any other population.
Okay, so that's, so this is harassment of anybody, including students.
Including students.
And this is just simply.
Correct, and, and the rationale that's come up, that's come up, uh, about this has to actually do to a connection to the bullying law. Do you remember there was a change in the bullying law a number of years ago, where the anti-bullying law came into being, and then it was revised because of the situation of teacher to students to, to teacher bullying, which wasn't clear the original bullying?
Yeah.
So this is what this does.
Um, okay, so then, no issue with that. The AC dash R, if it's, if it's definitions of the law, except, but I actually have an issue with that, but I, but I would like to strike one through six, and I see, does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
No.
So I'll come back with that as a question.
Let's fix it, Dan, does, Dan, do you have an issue with that?
No, I do not.
So I will come back with, uh, to you, because it's not a voting night, since it's just a revision, so I'll come back with those revisions to for the next meeting by not only combining potentially.
You don't have to come, okay, it's, it's, if it's.
Striking one through six to make it clear.
Just that, that's okay, and the other six, Dan, I, I just wasn't sure why we were doing that, to be honest with you. Um, does anybody else have any questions or comments on it?
Well, you're saying, you know, you don't want the ACR combined with the AC?
Well, I'm saying, if, if it's, if it's simply just a way to keep kind of the two separate, my, my question was, what are we doing? Why, why are we not having it together, but?
One is definitions.
Yeah, I'm kind of agnostic about it, to be honest with you, like.
ACR, Mr. Chairman and the members, the ACR came specifically after the Attorney General's Office read the AC, and they said, you know what, you need to clarify some of this language. So, one, I think, is about, ACR is about, here's the clear definition, and then you've got the actual, yeah, uh, implementation on the other one.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions on it or comments? No. Okay. All right, that's that. All right, next up, we have the vote to award before and after school, your contract.
Okay, uh, we had four firms submit proposals in the before and after school RFP. Uh, two of the firms, after evaluation, were declared non-compliant by statute. Uh, the remaining two champions have the most advantageous proposal, while considering the technical and price proposals. We recommend a vote to award the contract before and after summer care services to CHIN.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Just as a comment. Um, this is a five-year contract for the new process that we were able to get through town meeting a number of years ago. That means at least for the next five years, we have consistency working. Uh, I think, years like twenty-three through twenty-eight or something like that, the CHIN, it's been a long relationship, even through the process that we had to go. We do thank the competitors, um, you know, that they came through, um, on this, it's always good from our perspective, um, and for you as well. Um, but this is also, as you know, an offset that, uh, goes into really doing some of the upticks, that uptakes that we, uh, are upgrades that we do at school, so we're fully endorsing this. I want to thank the members of the very, the committee that went through the work of grading this.
Okay. We have no other questions on it. Danny? Okay, um, in that case, I would entertain a motion to award the, uh, before and after school childcare contract to Champions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Yes. I don't know.
I've been called worse.
I feel like we've become really good friends recently.
There's three people that call me Danny, and apparently you're one of them now.
All right, I'm gonna call you sir. Uh, next up, we have the announcement of the second group of class of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two out of scholarship.
So I'd like to thank the students at Norton High School in the class of twenty-two, who, who went out, did this, didn't have to, right? They did this because they said, what, what the heck, I got nothing to lose except some of my own time, and then, maybe if I decide to go to a, uh, a state institution. Uh, so these two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen students that you have before you have met the options, uh, that are in the second page, I think, provided to you. Um, and they'll be granted these scholarships, uh, and, um, they've given a copy of their, um, formal letter. You can keep it, upload it, I tell them all the time, take a picture, put it on your phone if you have to, um, and then, as you know, it counts towards, uh, tuition only at the community colleges, the state colleges, and the state universities. So congratulations to them for being in the top twenty-five, and for meeting the assessments at, uh, within the levels of advancement and.
Uh, why is it group two? Was there a group one that I missed?
Yeah, there was a group one earlier this year, and the reason is, if you remember during COVID, the height of COVID, they made this optional for students. So students didn't have to, to take it to move to the next level. These, uh, now, I think, uh, somewhere around thirty, thirty-five students have, uh, at Norton High School have done it.
It is a great option for students who are able to utilize it.
Right. So congratulations to all of them.
All right, next up, we get the global ed update vote, Dr..
Uh, I have just a few slides to share with you, because I, it's been, hold on, sorry, I'm apparently not the tech director, giving. Um, been a while since we talked about Global Ed here in Norton, and we have given our students such amazing opportunities over the last several years, that I wanted to share some of that with you, um, during this time. So, um, Global Ed in Norton started with Joe and I really exploring some options. Um, Dr. Byetta went on a language immersion tour, um, and PD tour in Barcelona, and I was able to do a educator professional learning tour and, um, visit schools in Finland. Um, and we came back really energized and excited, and wanted to kind of open up the walls of Norton to our students and get them, you know, to have those cultural experiences other places. to have those cultural experiences other places. Um, it's up the summer of twenty seventeen, we took our very first tour. We took twenty-one students and we visited Lisbon, Seville and Madrid. Uh, twenty eighteen, Dr. Kiefer brought his first group of students, um, to the Dominican Republic where they participated in the long service learning project. Um, in twenty eighteen, uh, Mrs. Winsber took a small number of students to the Global Leadership Summit, um, which took place in Berlin and was very much hands-on project-based learning experience for them. Um, and then in the spring of nineteen, um, I had the opportunity to take students to, um, Italy. We've visited Venice, Florence and Rome. We have about twenty students for that, for that trip. Um, and so these next few slides are just pictures of our Norton students around the world. As you can see, it doesn't matter where there are, where they are, what they're doing. Those smiles are huge. Um, I see Chloe in a orange light vest down there.
You have good eyes, Jen. I didn't.
Oh, you didn't see her, Jen? Well, I'm just lying together. So we've worked at the Trevi Fountain. Yep, there's Annie Run during her, um, time in D R.
Yep.
Um, we have Leaning Tower of Pisa. Um, there, uh, bottom right is one of our students, um, uh, in her Gladiator workshop, who has part of, um, their global leadership, global leadership summit. We have the Colosseum, we have the Canals in Venice. Um, and again, uh, more tours and pictures and kids and some awesome chaperones from our last trip. Um, we had a lot of, lot of fun and, uh, prior to COVID, we had four trips that were planned. Um, we were going to Peru for a service learning trip there. Um, we had students that were signed up to do service learning in Thailand. Um, we also had, um, Australia, I believe. And of course, at this point, I can't think of the fourth trip, but we had a lot of things that were starting to happen. Um.
Panama was the fourth one.
Can Panama? Panama, yep. Oh, and then Paris and Barcelona. We were supposed to do that, um, in June of twenty twenty. So unfortunately, we had a number of students that were signed up for, um, these global education experiences that were not able to participate, have since left Norton High School graduated, uh, which is really unfortunate. We do have a number of students, our current, um, juniors and sophomores who are really chopping up the bits to get started again. So we have a couple of different proposals for you to take a look at tonight. Um, so I just wanted to share this quote with us. Uh, it says, I'm not the same, having seen the moon shine on the other side of the world. Um, for all of our students that have participated in our global ed opportunities, they really do come home changed and, um, it's been an awesome experience. Every morning I roll through honeydew and I see Zoe, um, who makes my tea for me, and we have such a great connection because we spent ten days together in Italy and she always comes and talks about, you know, some of her favorite events. Um, so since, um, COVID, EF has made some, um, updates to their policies and protocols. Currently, right now, they are working under a COVID care promise, um, and that is currently set to expire in the fall of twenty-two. However, it really does depend on what the global situation is in terms of COVID. Um, so right now, they really help facilitating with, um, medical attention. If a student is traveling and gets sick, um, they will cover the cost of the hotel and all meals during their isolation period. If the student is underage, they will actually fly a legal guardian out to stay with their student wherever they are until they're able to come home, um, on their own. Um, and what we've heard is that if, you know, if the dynamic around the globe warrants a continuation of that, of that policy, that will do so. Um, they also have a risk-free enrollment period, so all of our students that enroll before June first can cancel anytime for any reason. Um, and they will get back a hundred percent of their money. Um, and then they also have the peace of mind program. There are things that happen all over the world at, at, at a lot of, you know, at any time, and what will happen is that if, if something comes up globally and we are supposed to be in that area, number one, if we are already there, they will get us out right away. Number two, if, um, we were, you know, planning a, a trip to St. Petersburg and now we can't go, they would work with us to, um, find alternate plans um, and tours. So those are a couple of things that I know are important for not only us as a district, but for families as well.
And interesting to, yes, peace of mind program. I was with the tour in Barcelona when the attacks in France and Paris took place, and there was a group schedule coming from a London to Paris trip. They rerouted that London trip to Italy for a continuation. So the kids didn't go to Paris, but because it had been that, and that was all done in twenty-four hours. And that took place in November of two thousand and fifteen. That is correct. That's when I was there.
Um, so the first, um, tour we are presenting to you tonight, um, we really wanted to squeeze something in for the spring of twenty-three. And the reason for that is that our current juniors, um, would still have the opportunity to participate before they graduate. Uh, so this is a nine-day tour for London, Paris and Rome. Um, you fly into London, uh, you visit all the big hotspots. You ride the London Eye, Parliament, Westminster Abbey, um, and then you travel uh, by the Eurostar underneath the English Channel, um, which sounds really, really cool. Uh, to Paris where there is a tour of Versailles, the Louvre, Eiffel Tower, and then from Paris you fly to Rome for the final leg of your trip. And then students would come home from Rome. Uh, that total cost is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, or families have the options to, um, pay it monthly, which is a three hundred and thirty-six dollars. The second, um, option for our students would take place after school gets out in June of twenty-three. Um, it is an eight-day experience. We are going back to the Dominican Republic because it was so popular with our students. They had the opportunity, the, the project they chose was, um, working with students and everyone absolutely loved it. So the challenge with the service learning is that EF works in real time with countries. So students really don't know what exactly what their project will be until about six weeks ahead of time, but they always, um, center around access to education, youth development, and then generational poverty. Um, and this is a cost of thirty-three hundred dollars for our students or two hundred and forty-seven dollars a month over the thirteen months.
Um, this is after graduation. If seniors wanted to, would they?
They would not be able to.
No.
So it's always been our practice that, um, we do not take, we do not travel with students after they've graduated. Um, simply because that our expectations for behavior are all centered around the Norton High School handbook.
Yeah.
Um, and after they graduate, it's, it's a little bit tougher to hold to that.
Yeah.
So are we prioritizing, I guess, correct, juniors for the London Paris?
Uh, we certainly can. Um, at this point, uh, we have. Right?
Yeah.
Absolutely, right? So we have, I mean, we can fill a whole box, fifty students. Um, it really just depends on how many people want to go, and then the way that it works with EF is that they provide a chaperone for every six students. It's free to the district.
Um, we should consider that because it is literally, it's gonna be your first.
It's their last. I think it should be an absolute. Make it first come.
Yeah.
Is there any other companies out there that specialize like this? Cause remembering back, EF was, was quite challenging when it came to canceling these tours. Granted, it was a pandemic, but, um, you know, they, 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 you know, they charged you if you canceled it, but then they told you that the trip wasn't happening anyway, but it was just kind of, it, it wasn't a great experience trying to work with this company.
Absolutely, and, um, I certainly understand that, and we, you know, Ms. Tannely and Dr. Kiefer and I were on, you know, with the receiving end of that with a lot of families as, as well, and we're certainly frustrated right alongside you. Um, there are other companies that do the same thing. They are not on the same level as EF when it comes to that global presence and the twenty-four hour um, safety call. You can call them, they have offices all over the world. Um, it, it's, you know, you are dealing with a large company, um, which makes it a little bit easier for them to get to you if you need them, which is, it's a really nice thing to have. Um, I think that the majority of travel companies actually had very similar experiences. Um, for talking to colleagues that may have worked with other companies, um, they, I don't think they knew what to do. It was their livelihood and they, they couldn't figure out how to, um, maintain their own business at, at that point as well. So it was definitely frustrating. I'm hoping that, um, some of the COVID systems that they've put in, they have also started offering a different option for families in terms of insurance, a higher level of insurance that families may be more interested in as well if they're, you know, deciding to send their child.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions on?
So on the, um, on the summer trip.
Yeah.
Twenty-three, in theory, would it, would a rising eighth grader be allowed to, to, on this trip? Cause they're still within the schools if they've gone to Norton Eye or going to Norton.
Yeah, so if, so our current eighth graders are, are rising.
So they will be eighth graders next year.
So our kids.
Will they be the current seventh graders then? I would think, right?
I gotta think about that for a minute, so just a second. So, um, twenty-three. No, so they would still be in eighth grade next year.
Okay, so it is the current eighth graders.
They would not be Norton High School students yet. Unless the committee has a different.
So the eighth grader that is in June, which is technically a ninth grader, would be able to go, but not the, or not be able to.
So if they just finished eighth grade and they haven't enrolled at Norton High School yet, they would not be able to.
Okay, but if they enrolled in Norton.
Ninth grade, yes, we have always kept all of our trips open for all four years of, of, of high school.
They're a little young, number one, but number two, you're not creating a real age disparity between an eighth grader and potentially a eleventh grader.
Yeah.
A rising twelfth grader.
Yeah, eighteen versus thirteen.
So I would, I, I would say that, you know, can, can, can we start a program for middle school programs? It's been discussed before, if you remember.
Yeah.
And in the future, we'll be going back to eighth grade field trips and all that stuff. I'm not there yet, but, um.
There are a lot of great options in the continental U S, um, or tours, if that was something that we wanted to explore further with our middle school students. I would say that might be a good place for us to start.
I, I've mentioned this a number of times, not to, to prolong this conversation. If you live in Massachusetts and you only know Massachusetts, you need to go to different parts of this country. It's interesting, uh, and I've said that I love international, don't get me wrong, you guys all know that, but I do think that there's great opportunities to learn from our, each other as, as just, um, you know, continentally, United States, or even Hawaii and Alaska, um, that, that can be very beneficial, uh, to students.
Right after nine eleven, there was a program at the library, a woman had written a book, I forget if it was Ribbons of Highway or Highway of Ribbons, something like that. And she realized that her kids had gone through more passports and hadn't seen half of the country. So that summer, they did a road trip all around the United States, and she said, you know, the, the things that they learned far outweighed what they had learned, you know, in our own area.
You said company provides chaperones.
They're, they're, yes, the company pays for them.
It's our stuff.
It's our stuff.
Uh, we've, we've, could it be a parent? Yes, it could. Yes, it's asking.
Could it be a former school committee member?
Could it be the superintendent? Yep. I already know which one my kid wants, so I might as well stop putting the money away now. Yeah.
It's nice to see it back.
Yeah, yeah, I can't really, really actually like to. Thanks. And it's funny too, cause I mean, as a school committee member, you know, um, obviously you think there are inherent risks to these different things, but I think the benefits.
Absolutely. And I actually can't. Norton is one of the few districts that I know of that, that brings tours in front of the school committee, has the school committee bless them, and their district like endorsed trip.
Don't they have places on the state?
Well, that's, that's.
Places people, like teachers will do it on their own.
That's been the trouble, is the liability that happens when you do something on your own.
Yeah.
I'm very much against.
Agreed, and that's why we, we, we like it this way. We, it's, it's great, you know, staff that go, the person who's leading the trip is trained by EF, they go on a training tour. Um, so it's, it's.
Okay.
Uh. It's required.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion, we, we're just approving both the trips, right? That's what we did.
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, I would actually take a motion to approve both the, uh, London, Paris, Rome tour and the, um, Dominican Republic.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sheedy?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the superintendent's evaluation processing time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you have, with the blank, uh, pages, just providing to you the seven pages evaluation system for the superintendent and the twenty-four page rubric. Um, this is really the beginning of you starting to do your homework on part of the two-year cycle. Um, I will complete, uh, parts of this for you because they're just factual pieces of information. Um, then there's sections of it where I suggest to you, this is where I think I am, and then each of you, um, all five school committee members fill out the whole thing. Yes, Mr. Stern, you won't be here, um, but, um, then they all go to the chairperson, and the chairperson creates the summation, the summation, then it takes place in a one-to-one visit with me, and then it's brought to public for an actual vote. Be mindful that your written evaluations, individual evaluations are considered public record. If you decide to, you know, as, as you're dealing with them, the timeline is during your homework between now and May first and the twenty-seventh. Um, and then about a two-week turnaround time for you to complete, um, your written comments to the chair, and then, um, myself at the chair meeting, I say June ninth, it can be another date, but around that time, and then a special meeting at the end of the year, just for the purposes of the superintendent's evaluation, as well as any other end of the year things I need to.
Did you do it two years ago?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on a two-year summative evaluation because I've been doing this for so long. Um, or if I get a needs improvement, I have to go on a year-to-year evaluation. So that's the process. Um, so as you don't remember before, um, and I'll make sure, and there's also, um, all kinds of uploading of materials. What I did last time is I created a file. You remember, I just said, if you want, I didn't even upload them. I just said, if you want to hard copy your stuff, here's all the stuff I've done that answers these questions. You can review it and then ask me questions. Of course, you can always see me one-on-one, um, if you so choose, uh, to do so.
Okay. Uh, any, any questions on that?
And it is a public evaluation.
Any questions?
Will, will the new member have to do it?
Uh, the new member may choose to do so, yes.
So I'll give you. When I was a new member, I chose not to.
It's, it's consistently been not been a no, um, but there are people that do do it. So, okay.
All right, next up, we have a vote to approve some journal entries.
Thank you. Uh, so each year we, we budget, um, appropriation funds and we budget funds to go into grants and into revolving funds. Uh, this year are, some of our revolving funds were delayed and the revenue's coming in. And every year, we actually, most of our expenses are done in the first three to four months of the year, and then we have to move them into the revolving funds afterwards. So, uh, we're doing this at this point in time, the total, uh, journal entry is one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Because of the size of it, the auditors would like us to have a vote to approve this, just to make sure that you're aware that we're moving the money into these accounts. These are expenses that were budgeted in these accounts. We just had to pay for them with appropriations before, uh, while we wait for the, the revenues to come.
So perhaps that's on the school choice. So that was something that we used other monies and then back on the school choice.
No, so we, we pushed the expense, the, we conducted the expenses on our appropriations account, and now that the school, six school choice comes in on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
So now we're moving those expenses to school choice.
Got you, got you, okay. Any questions on? Anything you're releasing here?
No.
Okay, uh, I would actually have a motion to approve the journal entries as written in our packet.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Daniel? Thank you. All of a sudden, Dan's answer. All right. Uh, and next up, we have, um, other business topics not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours in advance. Uh, one topic was certainly anticipated forty-eight hours in advance, but it is under this for a very specific reason, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Dan.
Yes. Two of them, just to inform the community that the campus monitor for Norton High School may be going out. Um, as you know, I spoke to you, to you, uh, about trying to find some funds to be able to get somebody, uh, who can support some of our battle and hallway issues that we're having at the high school. So if you see that posting, you know what it's for. Um, they're starting to kind of put the job together, uh, we, we have a draft job description that will be posted immediately. Hopefully we can find somebody for the rest of this year and continue to fund that position next year.
Um, can I just do two things before, cause you, you're in this last?
Yep.
So just two, um, two things I have, um, the ITX community, the ITAC game is coming up a week from tomorrow. Um, we're still looking to sell tickets. We have, um,
We're still looking to sell tickets. We have a lot of sponsors have come in, which is super helpful. But anyone interested in coming to watch our teachers take on the police, it should be a fun night. Tickets are still available. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was the town election on Saturday. Polls are open at the middle school, eight to four. We do have contested races for school committee and.
Select one. Just also comment on your ITAC. My weekly newsletters had the information, but my actual superintendent's comment is about supporting the ITAC. So hopefully I have the information about money and all that in that, just as an extra push.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No.
But I am coming back on Saturday to vote.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I think Jerry will last.
So, Ms. Stern. Ms. Stern. Kathleen, today, as you know, and I'm sure you're celebrating your home head already. Our school committee meeting. I want to extend, I know on behalf of my colleagues on the school committee, my colleagues in administration. I know my colleague, colleagues that have worked for NPS, your dedication for the last six years. I know the last few months have been more difficult because of your own personal stuff, but the fact of the matter is. That day that we sat in my office and I said, what are you doing?
Wasn't written back then.
So it's, we just really appreciate you. I know I have, we've had. Good conversations, conversations that were difficult but needed to happen and all that good stuff. You've always been fair to me. So thank you. I know that it's a job, especially in the last two years, that you don't make a penny off of it and you get a lot of headaches from it. And a lot of people have a lot of opinions and sometimes they don't recognize. How much stress it actually does cause someone who's showing up, you know, every Thursday night or every other Thursday night and all the other hours in between. Especially in this day and age of social media. So thank you for everything you did for us and for the last six years, for me professionally, personally. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's bittersweet. I've been part of the MPS since I figured it out today, nineteen ninety-nine. I think it's time. But I've, I've enjoyed it and, you know, like you say, there's been ups and downs however, but having a great board to work with has made it. Infinitely easier than what I've seen in my other colleagues too. So I really appreciate everybody. Thank you.
We're gonna miss you.
Kathleen, I'll, I'll tell you, like, I've done this for a long time and it feels like.
We know.
Really long time and I gotta tell you, particularly your second term. You won't see more challenging times than those. I mean, I, I gotta hope you don't. You know, it, it, we really did go through, but not just, not just the pandemic, other stuff too. Like, we went through a lot of stuff, you know. And you handle it with grace and the palm the whole time. Always, always a calm, cool voice and I appreciate that great.
Thank you.
So we have.
I do have a comment from the, from people at home. Ms. Holly says, thank you so much, Kathleen, for all you have done for.
She was my nineteen ninety-nine.
Alright, so.
I also had a.
Go ahead.
I also had a very nice Facebook message from somebody too that reached out. Now I'll share that privately with you guys. It's unexpected.
Kathy, I've seen you so I know. Works and you're gonna be Miss.
Oh, thank you, Peter.
We will still see each other around town.
Absolutely.
And you don't have one of these yet, so.
Are you sure?
Yes, I don't think you have one of these anyways.
Oh.
Should I sign Joe Byetta picture?
He's on the map.
I'll be happy to follow it, so thank you.
What are you gonna do with all your purple?
Oh, I'm still gonna wear it. I still live here.
Yeah.
Still go to the games, right, Peter?
That's like me.
I wanted to rename the high school activity.
Um, and Kathleen, if you want, everyone come back and sub.
I said I would.
We'll talk.
I'm a little busy in Gainesfield though, that in the month of May, we'll see what I can squeeze in for Norton.
Is Gainesfield cold for Florida?
No.
I told you, when I die, I'm gonna come back as you. Best life. Uh, okay, do we have anything else on our agenda? I don't believe so. Oh, we have the walk.
Yes, I'm glad we're building walk-through and facilities updating, will not return to the regular.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn this part of our meeting to go into the walkthrough, not to, not to return to.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And doing the roll calls.
Yep.
Uh, all those in favor as a roll call vote, Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
This is Stern.
Yes.
This is Gallagher.
Yes.
This is Tom.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, everybody.